Loudoun, it's the largest largest town in Virginia. And I can't, I think I speak for my body when I say that, you know, we don't really see the Leesburg Town Council or other town councils or the school board as lesser bodies. I think you all, I think people run for the job they want to have. And the jobs you're doing in your localities are very important. And just because one person sits in this building, or one bicep in this building, another bicep in another building, you know, we were all elected and we're all here to do the right things for the people of Loudoun County. So I do welcome you and let this be a beginning of meetings, not an end of meetings. And if we have moments where we don't agree, that's okay, as long as we're not disagreeable or disparaging, that's just fine and kind of how we operate over here anyway. Without objection, I do want to add one thing to the agenda. I want to add an item of land use votes taken by one body outside your area. So I'm going to add that to the agenda. And the way I think I'll do this is I will put us in the committee as a whole for all the issues that we have unless it's going, unless an issue is going so long and people are starting to kind of repeat themselves. And if that starts to happen, I'll put this on the clock. But really, I don't, I don't know, I think with these issues, it's hard to start off with a clock because they're pretty meaty issues and it's important that we discuss them in full. And so to do it on a clock is hard. So let's just move to a committee as a whole without objection for all the issues that we talk about and we'll see how that works out. So Mayor Burke, if I understand you right, item number one, plastic bags revenue, it needs not be discussed. Item number three, Cross Trail Boulevard, Kincaid Boulevard opening needs not be discussed. Number four, the Small Business Development Center needs not be discussed. Number seven, affordable housing. And you don't want to discuss number eight either?
What is number eight?
The regular business meetings, regular meeting schedule?
Well, yes, we don't need to go into detail, we can...
But just to say that we're going to have them and find out some dates in the picture. Okay, perfect, wonderful. All right, so then let's start then with item number one, I'm sorry, item number three.
The revenue share.
The revenue sharing, which is item number two, I'm sorry. Item number two, Compass Creek Boundary Line Adjustment and Related Revenue Sharing for Data Centers in this area. And I will let you open that up.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Sure, of course I would.
It is, if it's acceptable to the board, I would like to take a moment to make a few comments on each item as they come up tonight, starting with this revenue sharing, revenue sharing to help clarify our general position. The revenue sharing of the personal property tax on Compass Creek data centers, there's a little bit of a history to it. And I'm not sure that everybody knows what that history is. And so I just want to review it very quickly with you all and then, you know, take it from there. But for decades, the town and the county agreed that the properties in the JLMA would be served by the town utilities. And as those properties developed, they would be brought into the town limits unless the town had already annexed them. Pursuant to the JLMA agreement, the town made significant infrastructure investments to provide those utility services in the JLMA, including the Compass Creek area. And the county unilaterally nullified the agreement in June of 2019. However, the Microsoft project was already under development and the town utilities were the only option for utility service to meet that Microsoft timeline. Loudoun Water was years away from being, being able to install the infrastructure to provide the services to Compass Creek. And even though we didn't have a formal agreement with the county for the revenue sharing, we agreed to provide utility services to Microsoft due to the discussion between the town and the county and because we saw ourselves as your economic development partners in this situation, working for the good of both the town and the county. As your economic development partner in this case, the town was able to provide market certainty to Microsoft by ensuring the necessity, the necessary utilities would be provided to meet their development schedule without any additional cost or delay. And we did that, we gladly did that because we, again, were looking at it as a partnership. In fact, Microsoft is currently moving forward with development plans for their remaining buildings using town water. Further, the town believed that both parties had reached a general agreement, at least staff on the staff level, for a framework of a revenue sharing agreement. And that would provide water and sewer services to Microsoft in, as an out-of-town customer, or if Microsoft came into the town limits, we would, they would receive in-town rates. If Microsoft were bought into the town limits, the town would reduce the personal property tax on the computer equipment to a nominal amount, so Microsoft would not have to pay a higher rate. And then the county would then share the portion of the property tax with Microsoft and the town that was, that was equivalent or approximately equivalent to the town's nominal rate. So in closing on this item, the town was instrumental in making the project happen on a schedule that Microsoft established, providing business certainty to an important economic development opportunity for all parties. Loudoun Water could not have achieved this. Certainly, they would not have achieved this without a significant investment of infrastructure from the county and Microsoft. So we believe the county had already benefited due to the town's wise proactive infrastructure investment at Compass Creek and that the town should be recognized as the county's economic development partner in this specific endeavor. As such, we continue to believe that the revenue sharing agreement between the town and the counties is appropriate and the town remains opening, open to resuming any discussion among the elected officials.
Thank you, Mayor Burke. So before I call staff to the table from both the town and the county who want to speak on this issue, I thought I would open the floor for any other, either town members or supervisors who want to comment on anything that Mayor Burke just said. And I, as is my practice, I usually do not respond until last because it just, I just think I, as chair, I should let everybody else talk first. So does anyone else want to respond to any of that that was just said? Ms. Umstead? Oh, by the way, these are really strange microphones. You've got to hit it hard and you'll see the little light, light come in there.
I appreciate the mayor's position. And the mayor and the town manager, Mr. Dentler, shared that concern with me at a meeting a few weeks ago. One of the things, I think you may find the board, and other board members may disagree, but one of the things I think board members may be concerned about is business certainty. You're concerned about business certainty. Microsoft is as well. And the county would be potentially reluctant to do anything that resulted in less certainty for Microsoft, which is why I think you've, the town has run into some resistance from the county when it comes to the Microsoft property. Because the county's position is, we don't want to lose Microsoft from the county because the town wants to bring it into the town. That assumes, of course, that the double taxation system is in play. If the county and town were able to reach a legal understanding that would allow the town to do just what the mayor proposed, which is, and I appreciate your position on that, then that might be something else. But one of the, one of the things I'll want to hear from our legal staff is whether it would be wise, appropriate, or legal to offer an arrangement for Microsoft that we didn't offer for other potential data centers in the JLMA. But I, the mayor and I talked about the idea of bringing this issue before the full board. When I ran it past board members by email months ago, there was not great enthusiasm for it, but nothing beats having the council here explaining their position. So I'm glad you guys are here to talk about it.
Are there any other people that want to talk? Yes, Mr. Cummings. You know what we haven't done is have everybody go around the table and introduce themselves. And I apologize for that. I know everyone. And so I just assume everybody know everyone, but that's probably not true. So after Mr. Cummings talks, we'll take a quick, quick break and have everyone introduce themselves and I apologize.
Thank you. Obviously, as one of the newer members of the Leesburg Town Council, I'm coming to this a little late in the process. I know this has been a dialogue happening between the county and the town for a while now. But from my standpoint, I look at this as a win-win. And we can get there and make this a win-win when it comes to the revenue sharing for Microsoft, for the constituency, all of our constituents. There are opportunities that, with dialogue, that can, that can, we can bridge the divides that maybe are here now or were, were happening when the, when the staff was meeting regularly on this issue. So I would just like an urge, both the board of supervisors and my fellow council members, to put forward opportunities for us to talk and find the win-win because I think it's here. I think it's a, we can, we can find a win-win for the residents of Leesburg from a property tax standpoint, if we can get some revenue sharing. We can find a win-win for folks outside the town, town lines that are receiving town services. I really, and finally, and more, most importantly, we can find a win-win and continue to have a win-win for Microsoft and other companies and businesses that are looking for that economic advantage by being in the town of Leesburg, Leesburg, excuse me, and Loudoun County.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. And let's just take a quick break. And Mr. Kirschner, let's start with you, introduce yourself. Let's go around the table and do just a quick introductions. I apologize, I should have thought of that in the beginning.
Caleb Kirschner, I am supervisor for the Catoctin District on the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
This is I Cummings, town of Leesburg.
Neil Steinberg, Leesburg Town Council.
Tim Hamster, the county administrator, and I'm also a Leesburg resident.
Leo Rogers, county attorney, I'm also a Leesburg resident.
Oh, wow, okay.
Chris Sparra, town attorney, I am not a Leesburg resident.
Wow, wow, sweet. So our people have like more loyalty lying in Leesburg over here. Gotcha.
Kai Dentler, town manager, I am a resident of Leesburg.
There you go.
Sylvia Glass, supervisor for Broadland District.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Fox, I am a councilwoman for our town of Leesburg.
Kristin Umstead, Leesburg District Supervisor.
Carrie Nacy, Leesburg Town Council.
Mike Turner, Ashburn Supervisor.
Fernando Marty Martinez, town of Leesburg.
What is that voice? Where'd that voice come from? Fernando Marty Martinez. Well, welcome, everyone. I'm sorry, I should have done that before. Any other discussions before I, before I make a comment or bring up staff? So I do think that, I would agree with much of what Mayor Burke said, but not all of it. I think that the, as I listen to you speak, Mayor Burke, what I, what I didn't hear you say was what the, the customer wants themselves, what does Microsoft or the customer wants. And truthfully, some of the, some of the decisions made by the board were because the, the customer themselves were having, were feeling that they were running into issues with the town of Leesburg. And so at one point, and I will say, because I've said it before, I do think the decision made in 2019, as far as water and sewer was made in haste and we should have come to the town council, so I did not agree with how that happened and I did not vote for it. However, it was born out of something and it was born out of the, the customer feeling like the town council or the, and the town, that they were having enough issues that it looked like the deal, all the deals just could be lost completely. So I think that, that history is really important to have. I also, you know, if, you know, in one place, and it said that the town of Leesburg agreed that there was a gentleman's agreement between the town and the county that the town's decision to provide water and sewer to Microsoft was dependent on revenue sharing being established, I remember that differently. I remember that it was kind of a gentle woman or gentleman's agreement to make an agreement if we could get there. And so I don't, I don't think we had got to that place yet. I, I would agree with a lot of what town council member and my friend, Zad Cummings, said, that I do believe that if we, you know, if we can get to a conclusion on this, if we can get to revenue sharing, I'm fine to have that discussion, as Ms. Umstead said. But, but I do believe that it also has to be something that is amenable to the, to our customers. And that's where we were hearing a lot of the concerns. And quite frankly, that's where we continue to hear a lot of our concerns. Those concerns have not abated yet. And so it wasn't just council to county or staff to staff, it was the customer saying, yeah, we're not, we don't know that we have enough, what's the word? We don't know if, if, if the town itself is, is a reliable partner in some ways. And, and we can't just ignore that voice. And so that is also how we, we got to this, this place. It wasn't just that we walked away, there was other things that went on there. And I think that's important to say. I also, though, you know, I think this is an important discussion to have and I'm more than willing to have it. Having said that, Mr. Reiser, would you come to the table and is there a DED person from the town that would come to the table as well? That might be very helpful.
You would not acknowledge supervisor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Michelle. Supervisor Brixman, I'm going to acknowledge you, but boy, you, you don't, boy, you look like you don't feel well. I'm so sorry. But Supervisor Brixman is on the webex with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I figured you kind of mentioned me when you said I was attending online, so I didn't need to hear you.
Okay, thank you. So, welcome, gentlemen. So I will, I will start first with, with Leesburg to find out, you know, where, where you all think this went off track and based on what Mayor Burke said, what I said, where do you believe we are? And then let's kind of move forward with discussion based on that, after Mr. Reiser speaks as well.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Russ Seymour, Economic Development Director for the town of Leesburg, and as I will say, a Leesburg resident, as, wanted to make sure I fit in with everybody here this evening. From what we're... From what we're talking about, I'll keep my comments focused on specifically the Microsoft project, because that was a project that we were involved in. My office worked very diligently, working with Microsoft from the very beginning on this project. Now, I say from the beginning, and that was the beginning after they had already looked at locating to that site. That was a site that the Peterson Companies had marketed for some time and jumped on very quickly when there was an opportunity for them to go after a data center type user. And that was something that the Peterson Companies had been very active in approaching. We had worked with Microsoft. Obviously, the water and sewer was a big issue for them. They needed it on their timeline. And we made it very clear to them that in working with them, we understood, you know, my old adage is, the prospect drives the deal when you're looking at projects like this. And so we looked at it from a standpoint of, tell us what you need. Now, I will tell you that at that point, we were also going by the guidelines of the old documents that were approved a number of years ago that talked about that land at some point becoming into the town of Leesburg. But that did not, certainly from our office standpoint, have anything to do with our diligent approach in working with them. I will also tell you that I did not ever hear that there was anything negative about the town of Leesburg, anything that we were working with them on. We also had a very good conversation with them where Microsoft did agree and signed a letter of content or consent to actually be in the town of Leesburg. And that was something that was done. The only concern that was ever expressed to me in any of the conversations that I had with Microsoft was that there was a concern about the additional dollar tax or on the water, I'm sorry, not tax, but the additional tax amount that would be in the town of Leesburg. Data centers are the only type of business that we were able to identify in looking at the JLMA that did not make up the tax difference by being in Leesburg. Water and sewer, when you looked at all the other different components, data centers were the ones that we couldn't point to. We looked at, obviously, Walmart, At Home, Ion, we started going down the list of all the different types of businesses. They all looked at it. We broke the numbers down. It showed that they are indeed getting a little bit better deal being in the town as opposed to being in the county itself. So that was our approach in looking at it. Microsoft, unfortunately, we could not make it up. And a lot of it was because of the fact that they are such an enormous water user as well. And that was a factor with us. We did work with them. They did sign the agreement to be in on the condition that this dollar was going to be worked out. And that was something that they had provided with us at the time. I had worked with Buddy on a number of projects like this one. So this was something that we were sharing information, going back and forth on talking with that. They were aware that this was signed by the town or by Microsoft. And so that was sort of, I don't know, and I'll be glad to answer any questions, but I did want to make it clear to everyone, at no point did we ever hear anything from Microsoft that was a concern about Leesburg, about being in the town of Leesburg. They were very pleased with the fact that our utilities were getting done on their timeline, not ours. The infrastructure was not an issue. So those are the factors that we looked at in working with this.
All right, Mr. Reiser?
I don't remember everything quite the same way, but I do think that a lot of what Russ said is correct. In reality, I started working with Microsoft in 2013 to get them to bring a data center to Loudoun County. Once they finally decided to come here and they had selected the site, I did inform Russ at that time that they were coming to that site. And I think we were both very excited about the opportunity that came with that. I think that the town did a good job working with Microsoft around the water. I do believe that there were multiple occasions where they came to us with concerns about timing and those kinds of things. But when that happened, we worked it out, and I think that they were pleased with how everything turned out. We did not know that there was a letter being signed between the town and Microsoft. Microsoft called me and told me that, but they said that it was because the town had assured them that there was a agreement in place between the town and the county. I told them I wasn't aware of that, so I forwarded that then to the county administrator and the county attorney. But generally, I think that it has been a pretty good experience for the company in Loudoun County. And I think that by and large, the town, from an economic development standpoint, has been a good partner on the project thus far.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, supervisors and town council members, in no particular order, if you'd like to, well, first of all, I'm sorry. Mr. Dentler, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Hempstreet. Mr. Sparra? Is that how you say your last name?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you guys like to ask any other staff questions? Would you guys, I'm sorry, would you guys like to say anything before supervisors and town council members ask questions? Nobody? None of you? You're good? Okay. Questions from the town council members or supervisors? Ms. Fox?
Thank you. I was listening to Supervisor Umstead, and she mentioned that she didn't, it wasn't the will of the board to lose the town, lose Microsoft to the town. That was, I think, what I heard that she said. Is that correct?
It wasn't the will of the county to lose Microsoft to the county.
Maybe I want to turn your mic on, Ms. Umstead.
Thank you, ma'am. It was not the will of the county to lose Microsoft to another county.
Got you. Okay. That changes my question. And you also said something about a legal understanding. I'd like to know more about how we can get to that legal understanding, because I'm not sure that we have in this case. However, I have been privy to a lot of the talk about this idea since its inception. I'm sorry, I need to do this, don't I? Since its inception. And so at that time, we were presented with the idea and a list of, dare I say, requirements or provisos. So I'm just wondering what the legal, what the legal understanding would be with those things in place.
Mr. Sparra or Mr. Rogers, either one, be fine with me.
Sure, I'll go first, and then I'm sure Mr. Rogers will correct anything that I say that is incorrect. But I believe that both the county attorney and I are in agreement that the joint exercise of powers section of the state code allows us to enter into the type of agreement that is contemplated here. With the revenue sharing arrangement that we've talked about is allowable and appropriate under what is defined as a joint exercise of powers by two localities or two governmental units under the state code. And in all our negotiations, and I assume that was also the case with my predecessors, that was the framework within which we were operating, under the joint exercise of powers authority granted by the state code. And Leo, you can add to that whatever you'd like.
Thank you, Chris. And pretty much, that's correct. We basically got an idea from the town, saying we're looking to share revenue. And it was identified to us as the grand bargain. And at that time, I took the grand bargain and structured it under 15.21300, which Chris just identified, which is joint exercise of powers. And one of the things that's permitted is to promote economic development. So the first draft of the joint exercise of powers agreement was something that I wrote, but it was based entirely on what the town presented to us as what they called the grand bargain. The issues that seemed to be pertinent were having the data centers come within the town's boundaries. That was a significant concern, because although you can put them within the town's boundaries, it's extremely difficult, if not impossible, to take them outside of the town's boundaries if they then become a city. And the city status was a significant issue. Also a significant issue is, if we're going to do this based on economic development incentive, then the county, in exchange for sharing this revenue, the county taxpayer revenue, wanted offsets against other town costs and assurances that the town would serve other users when needed within the JLMA. The issues that we ran into were those boundary line issues and the fact that the town had put an indefinite deferral on the extension of water and sewer into the JLMA. We, again, as we did in 2019, had the landowners come to us identifying that this was a significant concern that created uncertainty. In 2019, the landowners were very upset that they were being required to sign a letter saying that they would come within the bounds of the town. And I don't know that that happened with Microsoft or not, but that was what was the impetus, at least, behind the change to the 2019 comp plan. So I don't know if that answers your question on the legal basis for a joint exercise of powers agreement. It has to be approved by both governing bodies at a public hearing.
Absolutely. Put your mic on.
Mr. Rogers, you said the property owner. And it was hard to understand, are you talking, were you talking about Microsoft as the property owners? Or were you talking about other property owners somewhere else?
I'm aware of two other property owners that made complaints. I am not aware of whether or not Microsoft did. That would probably be a better question for Mr. Reiser and Mr. Seymour.
Okay. And then I just, one thing, I've been at this for a while, and this actually came forward from a previous board, Ms. Bulby, and who was responding to Peterson. And they were the ones that came up with this idea. The town did not actually initiate it until we began the discussions. And then Ms. Umstead got involved in it. But that's actually where it came from, was from Ms. Bulby and the Peterson Company. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Martinez?
Sure, I have a few questions. You mentioned that you were recruiting Microsoft to come to the county in 2013. What changed their mind to do it in 2018?
I'd like to say a great sales job, but I think it's more that it took a while for their corporate strategy to catch up.
How about winning a contract from the government at that time is what really got them to be here? Because there was a government contract that was under protest. Microsoft won the protests, and all of a sudden, they're coming to Loudoun County. So I just wanted to set that part straight.
I don't believe, council member, that that is straight. I think that Microsoft was coming, whether or not they got the contract, because they already had a significant presence in leasing in other buildings.
Their corporate strategy was that as soon as they won that contract, that they were coming, if not to Loudoun, to our competitors in other counties. The other question I wanted to make was, in 2018...
Hold on a second, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Reiser, would you like to respond to what you just said?
Yeah, obviously, I spent a lot of time working directly with Microsoft, working with the data centers for 15 years. The strategy was not revolving just around the federal government. They have expanded and continue to expand throughout the county with or without that contract.
And so has Amazon. So what I wanted to also talk about was, would you, Russ, if you can answer that, do you believe that if we had not provided water and sewer, that Microsoft would still be working to get water and sewer if we had not provided it?
I will base this on the discussions that we had with Microsoft, with the county utility department at the time, all of us together. And it was the only way that Microsoft could get water and sewer service on their timeline was that the town would provide it.
And then, Leo, would you say that if we had decided to change a comp plan on our own, that you would be agreeable to that? Because when you change a comp plan without notifying the town or without discussions with the town on the impacts that that would have with the town, since we have already invested millions of dollars in our infrastructure to provide water and sewer to the JLMA, wouldn't you be a little concerned?
You do have to press these hard. So I'm not sure what you meant when you said, when you changed the comp plan on your own, it was the county that was changing.
Let me actually answer. Let me take that. Because with respect, Mr. Hempstreet and Mr. Rogers are the two people who are employees of the governing body. And so they don't do things, quote, "on their own." They do things at the behest of the board. And so those types of questions probably should come to me, or a board member who was here last term when that happened. And I spoke to that when I spoke, when I said that, truthfully, I don't know if that was a, that might have been a 7-2 vote with the two people who opposed that sitting at this table right now, for the very reasons that you said. Because although we did get a complaint, that, between that complaint and that walking up on the dais to change it, was about four hours, literally. And for me, it wasn't even if the complaint was valid or not, it was, we should have been talking to our town partners before we made that change. And I still think that, and I still stand by the fact that I voted against that at the time. That would not be a question for Mr. Rogers. That'd be a question for me.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the clarification. The town manager, Kai, and Russ, if you could answer this question. Did we at any time try to hold the county hostage, so to speak, about the water and sewer? Did we not work collaboratively with them and took some of what they told us in good faith? And so we went ahead and made agreements with Microsoft, and we actually acceded to some of Microsoft's concerns?
Do you want me to?
No, I think it's more appropriate that I address that. Mr. Hempstreet and I have had a lot of conversations about this. I know Mr. Rogers has been in probably a lot of the meetings as well.
Could you put your mouth closer to the mic?
Sorry. So there's been a lot of meetings. Mr. Hempstreet and I have had meetings. Mr. Rogers has been in a lot of those meetings. We, Mr. Sparra has come in, and before Mr. Sparra, I think there were probably, what, two other attorneys that were involved during, over the last several years. I wouldn't characterize that we ever tried to hold the county hostage. I don't know how we would ever hold the county hostage.
No, that's what I'm getting at.
Try to frame a response here. I had conversations with Mr. Seymour and one of the Microsoft's vice presidents for development. Their concerns that they expressed was certainty that they would have the water and sewer service on their schedule. And we assured that that, we were confident that would happen. That led at one time to a meeting that Tim and I had with that vice president to relay that concern. And I think, my memory is, we both agreed that we would make sure it happened and Microsoft would not have to worry about it. In essence, if there was an argument or debate to be held, we would hold it ourselves behind closed doors. But we've never held them hostage and...
I guess what I'm trying to say is that...
How we would hold them hostage.
That the town council and town staff did everything we possibly could to help the county get Microsoft in place on their timeline by providing the water and sewer.
Correct.
Okay. So here's a question for us. Who's going to do, get the most benefit from Microsoft being there, the town or the county?
Well, if you're looking, if you're looking right now at the tax revenue that's coming in, obviously, data centers are a big tax benefit for the locality that they are in. And right now, they are in Loudoun County. Typically, if you have other users like that, unfortunately, data centers are not large employers. They do have a lot of taxable equipment, some employment, but they're not going to be a draw to the retail and to the other users that are around there. So from a tax standpoint, that's what I would look at at this point, and that would be the county.
So the county is going to be the primary economic beneficiary of us providing our water and sewer and reducing the town's capacity to provide water and sewer to other projects? Am I right? Okay. So in essence, you know, all I'm stating is, is some facts that I know that we, as a town, we provided water and sewer to Microsoft, and in the middle of that, we had the comp plan changed on us. And we have never been uncooperative and green with some of the things that the county wanted us and Microsoft wanted us to agree to. And so we did everything we can, and we did it because there was a discussion of an agreement between the town and the county on revenue sharing. So, you know, the point I want to make is that I'm not, I'm not, I want us all to work together. I want our town staffs with the county staff to work together, come up with a collaborative agreement that shows some equity. I think that we, in good faith, provided water and sewer to Microsoft at the benefit of the county, not the town, because right now... of the county, not the town, because right now, the town gets no benefit from providing water and sewer, other than the, the water rates we, uh, they have to pay. So, that's, that is my concern. You know, I, I don't want to seem that I'm trying to be, um, you know, uh, stoke a fire or something. I just want us to put together an agreement that's equitable and benefits everybody. And since we're the primary provider of water and sewer per the GMLA agreement, which was changed on us, without our discussion, and by the way, um, Chair, I really appreciate you bringing that up, that, uh, you weren't in favor, that we needed to be part of the discussion. And that's, that's all I got to say. Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. So, I, I will say that overall, I, I think it's important to, you know, use statements and words that are not inflammatory. So, words like "holding hostage" do not be something that I would think is a really a non-inflammatory word. So, I'm just gonna make that statement and put it out there. Mr. Kirschner?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, everyone, for coming. Um, and I'm kind of one of the newcomers to this. Um, I've only been on the board for a little over two years, but, um, had a fair amount to do with this. I know I was pretty much, I was pretty engaged in watching the process, um, the changing of the comp plan for the county, as well as, um, the change, uh, in terms of the primary provider for the JLMA and whatnot. And obviously, I represent much of the JLMA, if not maybe in the entirety, honestly, I think I may. Um, I probably ought to look at a map to make sure.
Eighty percent, about eighty percent, yeah.
Yeah, about eighty percent. So, this is obviously an ongoing and, and significant to me. And, and I, I think, um, to kind of, um, a couple of the points that have been made by a number of the speakers, I, I don't think, we as a board in our closed session discussions, we can't really get into that, I don't think any of us disagree that we would like to come to some sort of profit-sharing agreement with these, with these, uh, data centers specifically and, and, and some other a, aspects. I think really the question is, Mr. Martinez says, what is the equity of that? And I think that's kind of where we essentially are, because it's my understanding, and I'm just gonna kind of get to the bottom line in this discussion, because I feel like we've been beaten around the bush a little bit. Uh, this is about money, at, at, at the end of the day, and it's about how much Leesburg is gonna get and how much the county's gonna get. And, um, we, we made a pretty, what I considered, a pretty generous offer, and we can't, I don't know if we're really at leeway to get into those, those particular discussions, Mr. Rogers, but, and I don't want to, but I feel like we made what was a pretty generous offer, um, to the town, which, which is, was in the millions of dollars, ultimately. And, um, we've got something back very, very different from the town. And I, so I think, honestly, um, unless there is some discussion as to how we can bridge some of those gaps, and I know that there have been, um, discussions with myself and Ms. Fox, there have been discussions with Ms. Randall, and Ms. Burke, and others on this board, in terms of how to perhaps bridge that gap. Um, but maybe perhaps some members of the town or the staff can maybe talk to some of the specifics of what you would actually like to see happen here at this meeting. Um, if it's not purely money, um, what else is it? And I'd, I'd like to hear really your thoughts, because I have not been involved at a staff level in terms of the discussions. And I think honestly, um, and I think the one thing that, you know, is pretty evident that, that this board is not real interested in, and I think Mr. Rogers alluded to it in terms of, there were some ongoing concerns in terms of city status. So, if that's where the discussion really, really is, then let's have that discussion. But if that discussion is not where it is, and you're genuinely interested in having some form of a revenue-sharing agreement, um, I think we are certainly open to that level of discussion. So, I would love to hear from any and all town council members who would like to say, "Hey, this is what I didn't like about some of the things that were discussed," or not. Whether this is the correct forum to do it in or not, I don't know, but I, I felt like in terms of money, the offer was significantly generous. And so, that's, those are my thoughts and comments. Thank you.
Well, I, I think the, the problem with trying to discuss that particular aspect of it, I understand what you're trying to get to, um, is that we don't have those documents in front of us. And so, that would be difficult. If, if, um, if you, you know, your assessment that it comes down to money, um, sure, that's, that's, that's true, um, absolutely, yeah. We are talking about the money aspect of it, and the equity within the money, how much, how much would the impact be to the town, how much impact would we have to the county, that sort of thing. Um, and I would have no, no problem having that discussion at a later date, at another meeting, if we had the documents so that we could go over it back and forth. But it's also part, part of it, and you've heard it from a number of us, um, the, um, the way that the, the JLMA, um, agreement that we had for so many decades was just so abruptly changed, without our input and without the, the partnership that we had, um, had always had in the past. So, um, I, I think that there's a little bit of that hangover from that, that, that particular action. But I, I can, and I'm sure everybody else will, will, you know, uh, voice their, their opinions on this, but it, I can pretty well assure you that most, most of us in here, if not all of us, uh, would love to have that discussion in a serious way and get down to exactly what you're saying. What is it that we want? How do we get there? And, uh, would, would be willing to most certainly do that.
So, I'm not sure how, how much I can say, talk again about the JMLA agreement when it was a pass board, and literally no member of, no person who voted for that is in this room right now. Not a single person. And the two people who voted against it are sitting here at the table. So, I'm not quite sure how long we're gonna like beat that horse. I think it's good and dead. But if we want to beat it some more, we can, right? But, but it's, it's, it's...
But it's not beating on dead.
But, I, I swear to God, I want to interrupt you.
I'm sorry.
Um, now, if you're asking us to bring the issue back before the board and have another discussion and have another vote, I will talk to Ms. Umstead about putting that on the agenda. But it, but that's a question, and, and, and that's an action. And I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with trying to see what an action is, but I'm not fine about just getting hit over the head with something we can't, that, that the two people who were here didn't even vote for. So, so if that's, if we want to go back and, and, you know, our board goes in the closed session and everyone gets, um, briefing of how that board, how that vote came to be, and why, and when, we can have that discussion. But to keep talking about it right now with Ms. Umstead and I, it's kind of a waste of time. That's the first thing. Second thing, there was a discussion that said that when the agreement was, was, when the, when the letter was signed with Microsoft, it was signed, understanding that the town and county had come to, had put an agreement in place. At the time that that letter was signed, had the town and county put an agreement in place?
I can answer for the town. There's never been an agreement.
Okay.
The town and the county.
So, so you, so if I heard you right, and if I didn't, please correct me, because you got, because it's been said like many times, we signed the letter, we signed the letter. But you signed the letter with a stipulation that didn't exist. That...
Didn't say, I'm not sure who said what, when, here in this meeting, but...
Who shot John? Okay.
But when the count, when Microsoft signed the agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, that they would come into the town, if there was an agreement between the town and the county for revenue sharing, it never implied that there was an agreement. There's never been an agreement between the town and the county.
Okay, so I thought that, I thought I heard that, that it was implied that there was an agreement. Okay.
That might have been said in this room.
But that's not your understanding.
But that has never...
Okay.
There has never been an agreement between the town and the county for revenue sharing.
I'm gonna get that on the table.
Nor has it ever been represented to Microsoft that we had an agreement in place.
Mr. Martinez, you said something that, it only concerned me when you said it, because I had never heard it said before. You said, "In doing, in having the town capacity, giving water to, water and sewer to Microsoft was, and like, quote, 'will reduce the town's capacity to provide, to provide water and sewer to other projects.'" Is that true? So, if you won't give Microsoft water and sewer, you're gonna have other projects you can't give water and sewer to?
If, if it's only one data center, yes, but we signed an agreement for more than one data center, five, am I right? Five more? Not yet, but if we were to do that, it would, it would be for multiple data centers. That's part of the discussion.
So, let me just say this one more time, because I want to know that I know that I'm saying this right. If you sign an agreement to do water and sewer for multiple data centers, you're saying it would reduce your capacity to give water and sewer to other projects in your town?
Of course.
And you're good with that?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, I'm not.
All right, I'll just check it.
Now, and if I might, on the two of your points...
Wait, I'm, I'm actually not quite finished yet.
Okay.
Um, and then the last thing is, the question was asked, "What benefit would we have if, if the town gave water and sewer to, to Microsoft? What benefit would there be to the town?" Well, obviously, the benefit is, if we can get to a revenue-sharing agreement, that would be the benefit. That would be the benefit. So, I do think that the question that Mr. Kirschner asked was kind of the question on the table now, which is, what are we looking at now? And where are we at right now? Because we can, we, we, you know, I, I think there's value in talking about what happens. I, I don't think that's an invaluable thing, because I think there's been two slightly different understandings from the town side and the county side. We may all never get, agree on it, we may agree on some of it, some of it may be murky, but let's put that to bed at this point and walk forward. So, Mr. Cummings?
Thank you. Um, I, I hesitate to say this, because I don't want to sound Pollyannish, or like Mr. Smith Goes to Washington.
I know you will, you are not Pollyannish.
Yeah, I know. But what, what is the harm in having, in negotiating this right now, right now, with details that staff knows, because they've been dealing with it, when we already have the customers being provided, water and sewer? You know, nothing's gonna change there. You know, we're, we're not talking about our money. To go into a closed session and, and, and schedule another meeting when we're all sitting here right now to talk about the taxpayer dollars, to me, doesn't make any sense. It's, it's not our money. We don't need to sit in a closed session without the cameras and people here to talk about it. We're not gonna, we're not gonna stop service. That's gonna keep happening. You're gonna have, Microsoft will have their data center. We're talking about sharing the revenue that's already coming into the county, or will when it's, we're up and running. So, I don't understand, and again, maybe I'm, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, why we have to go into a closed sessions where the taxpayers can't listen and have this discussion. Let's have it now. We've, we've spent 54 minutes talking about the past, as, as the chair mentioned. Let's talk about the future, and the future is getting a revenue-sharing plan so that the people in Leesburg, who are also county residents, can, can benefit from Microsoft being in the, in the JLMA, and we can all work together, and we can take that working together and kick it to the next project we have to work on.
So, are you saying what's the, what's the harm in talking about whether we want to do, or actually talking about numbers?
I'm saying, let's just...
Talk about numbers?
Staff has, staff has had, I don't, multitudes of meetings with numbers, since I've been on council, which is two, almost two years, they know it, they can talk about it. We've, at least at the town level, have been briefed enough on this, because it's incredible...
You briefed an open session about the numbers?
We briefed a closed session, but I'm just, again, I'm just saying, we're not changing, nothing changes when we walk out of this room, except if we can get a revenue-sharing plan done. And I think we, we owe it to the taxpayers to try to do that.
Okay. Ms. Fox?
Uh, thank you. Thanks, Zach, because I had the very same thought. But I wanted to also thank Supervisor Kirschner, because you did say that you came to us, and sorry, this is just a little bit of the past, with a very good, um, offer. You did. And I'm not, I'm not going to, uh, say that you didn't. We, there were some things on there, and we thought, of course, it was a negotiation. There were some things on there that we weren't sure we could, you know, agree with. So, we, we went back and forth as negotiation, but I don't think, or it was our perception, that that's not the way the county looked at it. So, that, I think that's where the sticking point was. So, it was no negotiations, just you take it or leave it, goalposts moved, things like that. That was the issue. However, going forward, I agree with the negotiations. But there's one question I needed to answer, and I guess, Chair Randall, this is to you. At the very beginning of the discussion, you said that, um, that Microsoft perceived that, that the town was not a reliable partner, I was hoping you'd expound on that.
Um, I, some, some of the, the reason that issue came to the board that day was because board members heard from Microsoft. And so, again, I didn't agree with how that happened or what happened, and, and I know some of what was said to those board members that, that days, but not all of it, but that was part of the impetus for that coming to the board that day. And so, um, so that's all I'm going to expand on there, because I don't, because to, I think to expand further doesn't do the town any good for me to say that at this point, especially if most of those issues have been resolved. For me to kind of talk, you know, go back and say what somebody said when they were hitting the town, if the town's resolved that issue, that makes, that makes sense for me to do that. But that's why that walked up on the dais that day, that, that's why other, other of my colleagues from then walked up on the dais that day.
So, going forward, we don't have this issue.
And I'm not, and I, and, which is why, oh, my God. Yeah, I know that, which is why I've...
I'm just asking, it's, it's not a, it's not one of those things that would...
Even if you did have it, I wouldn't have done that like that.
Okay.
Even if going for, even if you had those issues right now, I don't think that should have happened in that way.
Thank you.
And, and said that at that moment, as did Ms. Umstead, and then voted against it because of that. Ms. Nacy?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, so, not having, um, all of the background and history, which has been discussed enough, I think, to agree with the chair, um, I would like to echo what Councilwoman Cummings was saying, where I understand if perhaps, maybe we can't, uh, hash out actual numbers here in the room today, but, and, and I could be misspeaking, but for me personally, I don't believe the number was ever, um, the issue. I believe it was the other things that we couldn't agree upon, uh, that came along with that deal, and, and the fact, as Councilwoman Fox was saying, that the goalposts seemed to move each time it went back and forth. Again, this is, you know, our interpretation from what was coming from staff. Um, so, I think if there's any way that we could potentially move forward today, perhaps we could hash out some of those things, aside from the number, if, if the number, and I don't know, I, I could be misspeaking, if the number's the portion that needs to be in closed session, or if all of it does, I don't know.
So, that, you want to ask the attorneys that, maybe?
Yeah.
So, the two, the, so the two attorneys, so it's a number, can, can we, should we and can we comfortably talk about numbers right now, Mr. Reiser and the two attorneys?
Or any of them.
I don't know. Or can we do it, we can't do a closed session between two different bodies?
That is correct. We can't go into closed session. We could each go into a separate closed session at this point. Uh, we'll say this, that it seems like an easy thing to do, to negotiate a contract out in the open, but you will hear from the public, likely if there's disagreements. So, I do not recommend it, and that's why we have not been doing that to date. We can identify the points of disagreement, we can identify the time of disagreement, we can identify the actions that have been taken once the disagreement was reached. But I don't think we can go into the details, or if we wanted to do that in public, that would be a decision of both governing bodies.
Mrs. Vera?
Yeah, I agree with my, with my colleague at the other side of the table. I, I feel like the reason you have negotiations like this in closed session is to, uh, allow people to be sort of frank and give their opinions in an honest and open way that you might not want to have, you know, the reaction you may not want to have made in public. Um, and, and as, as Mr. Rogers alluded to, then you get, if the negotiations are taking place in public, you get the public sort of second-guessing your negotiations. To me, this is a, a closed session item. I agree with, with Leo. If, if you want to talk about the issues that were sticking points, I think we can allude to them generally and see if we can get some consensus or input from the members that are here present. But I, I, I agree with Leo, I would prefer not to hash everything out in, in the open, that's not how these things are done.
Mrs. Stein, thank you. Ms. Steinberg?
Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, okay, so we don't want to talk about the reliability issue. I was curious about the timing issue, though, that was mentioned, because I can't imagine what that could possibly be, since all of our infrastructure is in place. So, when somebody said there was a question about the town's timing, I, I'm, I'm not sure I understand what that referred to.
I don't know who said that.
I, I think it was Supervisor Umstead, I could be mistaken.
Did you say that?
But it caught my mind, and so I'm just wondering what we were talking about there. I made the note.
So, um, if, if the reference is to the timing of water and sewer to Microsoft, that was not my comment.
Okay.
Now, their, timing has been used in another context, uh, but I don't think it was said by anyone on the county side tonight. Sometimes, timing will come up if a developer feels they have a choice between developing in the town or in the county, and they, and it has gone back and forth. There have been times in the last 30 years that developers thought the town provided a faster development track, and there have been times when developers thought the county provided a faster development track. So, that, that can go back and forth, but that is another use of the term "timing."
I just wanted to be sure there's no misunderstanding, because there was never any question that the town would be able to provide the services to Microsoft in exactly the time they're asking for, and it's the only reason, though, why that project is up and running today. And they know it, and we know it, I think everybody else in this room knows it now. I have an entirely different memory of our offer that we got from the county, and I would argue that it wasn't entirely generous. One of the reasons why we were adamant in not accepting it was because, in the way it seemed to be chipping away, chipping away at the funds, and it's about money, there's no question about it, especially several items on that list that were open-ended, that, that offered no cap, in terms of the amount of money that we might be laying out in the, in the long term. It seemed entirely contrary to what should be a fairly simple formula, which is, we give up a dollar in terms of tax revenue, and the county makes it up. I mean, that, that seemed to be a fairly straightforward project, prospect, given that our timing made this one project possible. And it's happened, and it's up and running. I'm also curious as to, there was a comment that the board, in general, had no enthusiasm for what is basically one project, in the whole grand scheme of things, for the, for the county regarding these data centers. There's not a whole lot of them coming in the town limits, this is the one.
I'm sorry, there's a comment that what?
A comment was made, that in general, this board had no enthusiasm for the proposal.
This board meaning which body?
The one, the Board of Supervisors.
Had no enthusiasm for the proposal?
I know what the council members are referring to, I can, because I made that comment-
Yeah.
Several months ago, when negotiations seemed to be stalemated, I sent an email to board members, and I asked, "Do, do you want to continue down this road?" I did not get an enthusiastic response, yes.
Gotcha.
I either did not get a response, or folks said, "It doesn't seem to be going anywhere."
Gotcha. Mr. Steinberg, can I make a suggestion before I call on you, Mr. Kirchner? Can I make a suggestion? On the, on the advice of both of our council, and on the record, both of them agree that perhaps right now, the money discussion is not the discussion they have right now. However, as Ms. Fox said, and I think Ms. Nacy may have said it as well, there are other, there are other things that we may want to, right now, that we may be able to put on the table, and talk through, and hash out, since the money issue cannot be. Because, you know, it, it's, it's hard to have a discussion, yet not have a discussion about the, about the money. But the other things, those don't have to be closed session items. And so, perhaps we can have some of those discussions right now.
I, I appreciate that. I don't think I've given up anything in-
Well, I don't think you have either.
Okay. And then, I also had one final question, actually, somebody else brought it up. When we, when you said there was resistance, someone said, I, I still wasn't clear as to whether or not it was the property owners versus the customers, to whom the property owners were in effect, marketing for potential data centers. So, does, anybody remember who said that, and would they care to elaborate?
When, 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 when the item walked onto the dais, it was the customer. I think there had some, there've been other times when it was the property owner as well. But when the item walked on the dais, it was the customer who had had discussions with some of my past colleagues. Having said that, and once again, those issues have been resolved, which is why I do not know why you all keep wanting to talk about issues in your own town that have already been resolved. That doesn't seem very productive to me.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify-
Okay.
What that was, who that was coming from, and I will-
I think it's, I think it came from both.
Yeah. Well, the reason I ask that is because we know there was resistance from certain property owners, whom I will not name, about certain projects within the JLMA. So, that's why I wanted to clarify, if we were talking about property owners versus-
It came, it was both.
Customers.
It was both.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Kirchner?
Yeah, just briefly to, to address a couple of things, from certainly my understanding as a represent, representing a large portion of JLMA and the constituents there. I mean, there were a couple of things that obviously I wanted to accomplish through the, our proposal, and that was try to bring rates for those within the JLMA in par with those within the town. But obviously, as part of that, you have to have offsets. So, so in terms of some of the offsets that were put forward, they had very specific reasons. And, and I think also, as, you know, under the joint exercise of powers agreement, it is required that we have to promote some sort of economic development. So, some of those offsets have to occur on behalf of the county, in order to actually make this work. Now, at the end of the day, it is my understanding, and I can throw some numbers out here, but I don't really want to get deep into them, but our, I mean, it was my understanding the town was, stood to benefit between 10 and $20 million under this deal, at the end of the day. And I'm not sure if that was ever relayed ultimately. And so, quite frankly, that's where I think perhaps some of the breakdown is here. I know I spoke to Ms. Fox about it over the phone, and whatnot, but I, but I think, from my conversation with other town council members, that wasn't getting relayed. And perhaps there's some discrepancy on that, and perhaps that's maybe where some of the breakdown was. But ultimately, at the end of the day, when everything was fleshed out, I think the town stood to, to have a net gain of over $10 million, and perhaps significantly more. And so, when we, we got this significant resistance and pushback, I was, I was kind of shocked and surprised. And then, I think this was all kind of tied together, you want to talk about a little bit of hurt feelings, when the providing water and sewer to other portions of the JLMA, specifically Tascarara, was indefinitely tabled, we took that as a significant shock. So, I just want to kind of lay some of that out on the table, to let you know that, you know, we don't sit, just sit back, we, we observe these things. And I wanted to get those out on the table, and make it very clear that that was our understanding of the agreement. But there has to be some sort of give and take, in terms of a revenue, revenue sharing deal, simply because, simply because there is a joint exercise of power, so, a requirement that we fall under. So, anyway, I, I do have to run to another hearing, but I just wanted to at least get that out and have, as part of the discussion.
All right. Supervisors and town council members, I'm going to try this one more time, all right? We shouldn't have a discussion about money, right here and right now. That is a closed session item for many, many reasons. If you all want to have a discussion about other concerns, other issues, other stuff, please bring those forward right now, and then what we can do is, either at, at the break, have both the attorneys talk about how, if we, if we, because they've already given us fairly good advice, what we shouldn't do. But talk about, you know, perhaps if you, if we want to elect from this, from this larger body, four members, to start sitting down again and hashing out things, money-wise, kind of level set everybody, I think we're, we're all good with that. But, but, but we, I, I did not go to law school, I am not an attorney, so when my attorney gives me advice, I tend to take it. And we have two attorneys telling us not to do this right now, I think we should probably not do this right now. So, if there are other issues that you all want to talk about, I heard the city status issue come up, some other things, let's do that. Ms. Burke, what do you think about that?
In, in the direction that you're asking us to go, or about city status?
No, 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 in the direction we're asking us to go.
I, I, I think, I understand what council member and, are trying to do, but I'm a little, I'm, I'm very leery, that you can't, you can't, you know, we can, it's difficult to talk about things and not get to the money aspect of it. You know, somebody mentioned about caps, that was one of the issues. So, if we start talking about it now, we've got to start talking about caps, and then we get into the money part of it. So, I'm just, I'm more cautious than my colleagues, and I recognize that on a regular basis. And that's my cautious.
Then, Ms. Burke, what you'd like to, what you'd like to do, we can do a couple of things. One, we can take a break, and have the two, two attorneys talk about, then discuss how, how to have this conversation. We can decide if four, four of us, two from each side, want to like reconstitute these meetings. We can table this whole item right now, and go to another item. But, but I also think we should listen to our attorneys. I agree with you on that.
Oh, yeah. And I, I don't think tabling it right now is, I mean, I think we need to conclude this discussion-
Conclude, yeah.
Decide what we're going to do.
All right.
I have no problems with, if we wanted to, you know, set a subcommittee together, kind of thing. I have no problem doing that. But, and if there's particular things that people want to talk about now, that you really think that you can do it without the money part of it?
Agreed.
I have no problem.
Totally agree. I totally agree with that.
But I, I don't think it can be a conclusion tonight, by any manner of means-
Yeah.
In that regard.
I agree with you.
We'd like to see an action plan.
I completely agree with Mayor Burke. Put that on the record.
May, may I make a couple?
Absolutely.
Well, as far as the comp plan, it still impacts us with our planning in the JLMA. So, I would love for us to have a discussion on talking about what we can or can't do within the JLMA. So, I think that would be something that I would love to see us moving forward on. I agree that we need to continue this discussion with our lawyers and town staff on the, on the revenue sharing. And I want to apologize to Supervisor Turner for hogging the mic.
Honestly, you know me, I'm not bashful about chiming in. There are whole gaps, apparently, in my logic process. I have read this item at least a dozen times, and I don't have a clue what you're talking about. Honestly. I, I have tried to, there are, I just, big iceberg-sized pieces that are just missing in the logic process, because logically, this doesn't seem that hard to me. It just doesn't seem that hard to me, and it seems to me, conceptually, we ought to be able to come to some sort of theoretical closure on, on the big items, and leave the money out of it. But it just seems too easy to me, and so, I'm sure I'm missing a lot, so I haven't said anything, and then there you have it.
And so, if I, I think the idea of getting somewhere is a great idea. Mr. Seymour, how long have we been involved in this? I know, almost these last two years, plus a year before, three years?
We, yes, I mean, it has been-
Three years.
Mr. Steinberg, let me say this again. If somebody wants to, if they believe you can talk about other things that don't involve the money, I, we're sitting right here, you guys keep like beating us that we're not talking about it, so talk about it. I mean, I'm fine with that.
I'm not saying, but this is to Mr. Turner's point exactly. He says he's got gaps, and yet, we know, we've been at, many of us, a number of us sitting at this table have been at this for three years, and seem to get nowhere, including, by the way, several meetings involving two of us, and two of you, and the attorneys, and, and the executives. So, how, how do we move it, that, there's the question, how do we move it forward?
We move it forward, I have an, I have a fantastic idea. We move it forward by talking about the things right now, right here, that don't involve money, and then getting a group together of four of us to talk about the things that do involve money, and then coming back together, either two of our board members are back together to have the money discussions. That's a thought.
So, when you say have a discussion, but not talk about the money, are we saying we, we want to see if we can come to an agreement of a general revenue sharing idea between the county and the town, targeting this one thing?
I'm saying that our two attorneys have said, we shouldn't have a money discussion. So, if you all have other things, and I gave city status as an example, because I heard that thrown out, thrown out there, that's something that we can, that's a thing, something we can talk about, that's not talking about the money. There are other things we can do right now without talking about the money. That's all I'm saying. And I, Mr., I think Ms. Burke is saying the same thing. Okay.
Should we move on?
No.
Can I just make one suggestion, piggybacking off of what both the mayor and the chair mentioned? Maybe our attorneys could come up, we could agree on the, the two or three items that we can talk about, that are not money-
Yes, thank you.
Bring a break, and then let's have that discussion.
So, I actually think I said that about 20 minutes ago.
You did.
So, can we speak of city status and, and the hangups there, without talking about money? Is that, is that even possible?
I'd go first. Without getting too much into the weeds, one of the things that was included in one of the draft agreements, talked about city status and how to get around that, but of course, it was tied to revenue sharing. So, I mean, all of this, it is a revenue sharing agreement in the context of economic development. I mean, it seems to me, with all due respect to everyone's thoughts here, that, that the thing to do is, our team sits and figures out, okay, these were the things that caused us heartburn. And Mr. Rogers does the identical process with the, the county elected officials, and we figure out what those points of impasse were, and we reconvene in, with the two, two from each side, and see if we can figure it out. Because it, it seems like there, there were, there were definitely a few issues, but they're all related to revenue. Revenue is intertwined with virtually every aspect of this agreement. And, again, I, I don't think it's appropriate, and I believe, I don't want to speak for Leo, but I think both of us don't want to have that discussion in public. So, what I would say is, you know, neutral corners, let's be sure we have our list of issues, what the, what the points of impasse were, and then we reconvene with the, the two from each side, and whatever staff is appropriate.
And I, I think that's the thing to do, because there's, the other option is to leave it as it is and do nothing, which is not an option, right? That's not an option either. So, I, I understand what you're saying, Steinberg, is we've been at this for years already. Well, you know, next year is going to be next year, whether we keep working on it or not. Right? Time's going to pass, no matter what, so let's keep working at it. Right? That's, that's my thought. Ms. Ms. Fox, your light's still on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And I, I agree with you, and if we take anything from this, I feel like negotiation, communication, needs to keep happening. I, I felt, I felt the stop. I, I think I understand why there was a stop. I, I feel a little bit hopeful now, and I'd like to keep ongoing with this.
I'm also feeling like the four negotiators should all be women. That's what I'm feeling. Yes, Ms. Nacy or Ms. Umstead, whose light's on? Messing with you, Mark.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. There, there are two issues. One, one of the folks on the town side had made a statement to me, why can't we just get council members and board members together in a room, and not have the attorneys there, and work it out? The problem is, this is going to be a complicated, it's not simple, it's not simple at all. It's going to be a complex legal agreement. And you're, and if we don't have attorneys in the room with, with the subcommittee, if one is created, then the non-lawyers are going to work out something that seems reasonable to them, and then it'll go back to respective attorneys, and they'll say, we'll hear all the problems with it. So, you need the attorneys in the room with any subcommittee members. The second thing that I've noticed on the board, unlike the council, where everybody runs at large, board members run for district.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, one of the hangups we've had is that folks who don't represent Leesburg, or the JLMA, have not always seen a benefit to their districts in setting up an arrangement where Leesburg benefits, but other districts do not. So, we, we do have at, at least one member of the board who very strongly and articulately espouses that concern. So, that's something at the board side, we're going to have to work with.
That's such a good point. That is such a good point, yeah. That's such a good point. I, I forget that sometimes, representing Leesburg myself, I forget that point, that's a really good point. Ms., I don't know, Ms. Glass or Ms. Fox, who has the light on? Ms. Glass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, can, since we've been talking about having some type of subcommittee, can we discuss now?
Whom's going to be?
Who will be on the subcommittee?
Yeah, we can. You, I thought you guys were going to ask that?
I was going to offer a suggestion-
Okay.
Regarding that.
Okay.
If I may, and hopefully, no one takes this personally, because I do not mean it in that way.
Don't worry, we won't.
But I would offer that the members of the sub, this new subcommittee would include, of course, the, the heads of both bodies, the chair and the mayor, but then perhaps two additional people from the board, who either haven't been ingrained in the history of it for a very, very long time-
No, I don't either.
And are, are fairly new, or looking at it with a new perspective, fresh eyes, potentially. Just a suggestion.
Mrs. Steinberg?[1763.01] Mrs. Steinberg?
I appreciate the comment you made about the supervisors representing their various districts. I would argue that each supervisor could go to their district and say, you are benefiting right now because of, of, of the services of the town provided to this one particular entity very close to the town limits. So the, the various districts are already benefiting from this, from this data center, whereas we are not. So, thank you.
Ms. Bricksman, did you want, did you want to add anything to this conversation at all? You hadn't raised your hand, I'm just making sure.
She wants to go to bed.
I don't really have anything to add. I trust my colleagues on the board who have a more fuller understanding of these issues to take the reins of this issue. I don't know that being from Eltonkey District, I would be an appropriate person to be on said subcommittee. And in fact, I actually need to hop off in a few minutes, because I also have another meeting at 7:30.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I will say, excuse me, I will echo what you said, though. I am not a lawyer, and I know these issues are complicated, and I would not feel comfortable in having any sort of negotiations happen on these issues without our attorneys involved, because I think what would happen is the representatives would come up with a great idea and think we have everything solved, and then the lawyers will say, actually, what you're trying to do is not legal, or what you're trying to do is outside the bounds of some other policy that we've set. So I, I will echo your concern on that.
Thank you. Ms. Burke?
I, I think we're, we're getting to a place where we can finally get some action done. I'm very excited about this.
Yep.
And I don't disagree with Ms. Nacy's suggestion. I don't know if we can get three, because you can't get into a closed session then, so it would have to be...
Yeah, she, you didn't say that, though. You said, yeah.
No, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and believe me, I take no offense, I mean, I would, I'd be fine with Mr. Kirshman and Ms. Umstead. Either, either whom, I think, I think the two boards can make a decision, and maybe today is, today's Thursday? Maybe the two, two boards can make a decision. Well, I guess we can do it right now. We can do it right now. So are there two council, town council members? Yes, sir. Oh, Mr. Rogers, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light.
Madam Chair, I wanted to say that should you select a subcommittee even of two, the rule is generally three, but a subcommittee of two is still a meeting of each public body and would have to be an open meeting.
How's that possible?
To the public. If you designate a subcommittee, and the subcommittee...
Ah, I understand what you're saying. Okay, so we won't have a subcommittee, but just before people start getting together and talking, that's okay?
Yes.
I understand what you're saying.
And I, and I can think of a way to do so, so you do not have a public meeting.
Well, that's interesting and ridiculous, right? Really? Now, that, that doesn't feel transparent. That feels ridiculous to me. Is that, is that a General Assembly law? Is that the FOIA issue?
The, the FOIA issue, yes, it is. A subcommittee of the public body is still a meeting of the public body.
Wow. Okay, so we won't designate a subcommittee at this moment. Okay? Mayor Burke and I later on will have a talk. How's that sound? Me and Burke and I will have a talk later on. All right. Everybody okay right now? We're good? We're fine? All right, let's, we're going to take, we do have, we are feeding you tonight. We have Mama Lucius here. But let's try to do, we have four, three more items to go, the two that Ms., that you all have set, and then the one that I bring into the, to the, to the body. Yes. And, and she believes, you mean, you being, five's going to be really quick, because that will be the next one, technically, the space needs, future county space needs. So, Ms. Burke, would you like to open that up?
Yeah, thank you. This, this question is about the future space needs within Leesburg for the county. And it came to our attention that there was some talk that, that the town was opposed to the Shenandoah Building. And we want to definitely go on the record to say that that is not accurate, that we think the Shenandoah Building is right where it should be. The services that are being provided from that building to the residents there are accessible and very valuable to those individuals in that area. So we don't have any, any problem with the Shenandoah Building and with the redevelopment and, you know, as long as that, you know, the, those services stay for the population in that area. The one, it, it might have come from a, a conversation I had with one of the board members in regard to Miller Drive, because Miller Drive is our area that we put together so that we could have Flex Industrial, and we could have, it would be a, a great revenue support for us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember that, okay.
Right. And the county's bought a lot of those buildings now. And so, as you are building, we just ask you with great respect, when you build your building on Boland Park area, that you would be selling those, the buildings on Miller Drive so they could return to a commercial aspect. But that was our intent when we were talking about it, not, not to say that we are opposed to you being in the town or anything of that nature. Just, we need you to be aware that as you, as you take more of the buildings in town, that makes less for commercial endeavors for our, our taxpayers.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I think you mentioned that before, and I thought that's, I think that's a valid issue, and you mentioned it before. Anybody have anything else to add to that? Anybody have any disagreements with that? Yeah. So the Shenandoah Building is actually part of our adopted space plan. We are going to be renovating that building for obvious reasons, but we continue, like, with that renovation process, and we believe we're going to remain in that building. And in fact, I think that, I think the whole area is, can, you know, it, you know, a few of us land use area, but I think the whole area can be really developed in a way that, that can be a, kind of a behavioral human services hub, like a campus in, in Loudoun County. And so, I wouldn't venture to tell you all to do that, let alone take a vote on that, on our side, but I, but I think the Shenandoah Building and its location is really very valuable. So, but I do remember you talking about Miller Drive, Mayor Burke. So, anything else on that one? All right, so then the other two items, so let's take, because we are, the other terms I think won't take us long. It's the master minimum of understanding for county services, and then the item I have, which is one body doing, taking votes on land use issues outside of that, that body's land use area. So how about we take a 20-minute break and come back and do the last two items, and let's get out of here by 8 o'clock? How's that sound?
Thank you. Okay, guys, we're going to come back to order. And since Mr. Spira, am I saying his name right? Spira is not in the room and we cannot really talk about memorandum of understanding without both attorneys in the room, I will go on to the issue that I have and then we'll go back to the memorandum of understanding. I should say in advance that I did not send this to my colleagues in advance and I should have, but I more want to say something than anything else. Recently, the Leedsburg Town Council took a vote to, I guess for better way of saying it, oppose the stadium, the stadium deal, if there was a stadium deal. And I want to express my displeasure with that moment and I want to tell you why. One, and first and foremost, I can't imagine the reaction of Leedsburg Town Council if the board of supervisors took a vote on a land use application or a land use anything in the town of Leedsburg. I have a feeling I would get a very correct phone call from Ms. Burke that would say something like, Phyllis, if you want to vote on land issues in the town, move to the town and run for town council. But moreover and larger is, we have no idea, none whatsoever. If there was, first of all, the legislature, the Virginia legislative body has not voted to even allow a stadium in Virginia. That's the first thing. Secondly, if they did vote on that, we have no idea what we'd be looking at. We have, I mean, it would be at least five to 10 years away. We have no idea what type of traffic mitigation would happen between now and then. So how it would impact Leedsburg, which is literally 14 miles away from a proposed site, we have no idea. We have no idea what financial structure we would be looking at. I have said, as has other people, that we would not put county money in this and that we wouldn't be raising county tax money or that kind of thing. We wouldn't put county money in it. We have no idea how much of a land application would be if it was a stadium versus other very revenue generating items. We have no idea. And so whether or not it's an application where it happens to have a stadium there or it's an art center or it's, for God's sakes, Disney for all I care, whatever it might be, we don't have any idea what we're looking at in five to 10 years. So for a, and you guys talk about, you know, like talking to us and stuff before you make a vote and how we should kind of talk to one another. So for your body to make that vote and let me read about it the first time in the paper with no phone call, no call to Mr. Reiser, no call to me, no discussion at all, it just kind of slapped us in the face. And moreover, we don't know what, if anything, anyone would be talking about years from now, years from now, and what kind of road structure there would be and what kind of financial deal would be. So I guess I'm going to ask you a favor. If you're going to take a vote on a possible or absolute land use issue in the county, can you give us a call first? Can we have that discussion? Can we maybe talk about that? In the same way that Ms. Umstead and I voted against what happened last time because of that very issue, we hadn't talked to you yet, there had been no discussion with the town council and I voted against that, I would appreciate the same courtesy that if you're going to take a vote on a land use issue in the county, that we get a phone call first. That is my request of you. Ms. Burke?
And I have, I will take responsibility for not reaching out to you. I appreciate your input that it would be, it would have been good to hear before it got in the paper. So I will definitely take that responsibility. But the letter, what the point of the letter was to just state and support your and Ms. Umstead's position that we did not want Leedsburg residents who are county taxpayers did not want, you know, our taxpayer money going towards a stadium. And that was the intent of the letter, that and only that. We don't know, as you said, anything about the land use or anything of that nature. But I most certainly will take into, I'll note that and make sure that if something like that does come up again, that we definitely will reach out to you. And I do apologize for not having done that.
I really do appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. That's all I had, unless anybody has something to think on this issue. All right. Then let's go back to the memorandum of understanding for county services, which is item number six. Ms. Burke, would you like to, Mayor Burke, to check to open that one up?
Okay. Sure. This is generally about, well, it's a general position that the county should provide services within the town, the same as it provides for other areas of the county, including the other towns, without the need to have a formal written agreement. To the best of our knowledge, the county has not required the other Loudoun towns to sign MOUs regarding provision of county services within the towns. And so, you know, if that, if that's not entirely accurate, it is my understanding that these agreements are not fully current or consistent on the basis of talking to the other mayors about it. But as you know, as we always say over and over again, the town residents pay the same county taxes that residents pay outside and they should receive the same level of services. And I think that, I don't think we have any issue with the services that the, our residents are receiving. It's just that every time we need to have some inspection of apartment for bugs, which is a county service that you provide, we have to write an MOU in regard to it, to make it happen. And so other localities don't have to do that. It should be that if it's not a town, you know, if there's no town regulations on it, you do what the county's regulations are. And we're not asking you to follow town law or town ordinances. We're just saying if that's something that the county provides, that you will do it without us having to always make these special exceptions, these MOUs. Mr. Spira, I don't know if you want to chime in on this?
I was, again, I'm kind of new to the party. I've only been in the position a year and a half and I came from Alexandria, independent city where we didn't have things like this. And I was a little bit puzzled by these MOUs as I started to encounter them in the course of performing my duties. And they seem to be a little bit all over the place. Some have restrictions on the number of cases, if you will, or calls for service. Some do not. Some appear to be expired. And then there are other instances where services are being provided where there's no MOU. And then, as the mayor alluded to, in the sort of informal poll that we did in speaking with other mayors and other town managers and other town attorneys, it seems in some instances, they don't have them at all. So I'm just trying to figure out what's the right way to do it. We certainly want to be within the confines of what the state law requires, but there's got to be a way that we can streamline it or make it simpler than having to look at multiple individual agreements with respect to individual types of services. That was my only thought.
Mr. Hymnstreet, Mr. Rogers, if you want to be the one who would like to respond?
So I think Leo wants me to talk first and then he'll clean it up. So the town does not, the town is not charged for services, so this is not a cost issue.
It is not.
The way that I understand it, both from originally Jack Roberts and then from Leo Rogers now, this is an issue of authority. So the only place where we have MOUs is where the town has authority under its own codified ordinances to regulate the service. So in every instance, it's an issue of the MOU is needed for the town to grant the county the authority to enforce in a, an issue that is controlled by the town under the town's codified ordinances. And otherwise, we don't have any authority because the town is an independent political subdivision. The county doesn't have authority to go in and enforce county codified ordinances within the town. And so if the town wants us to provide that service, which is, and the example that you gave is a good example, nuisances or things on private property, the town needs it to provide the county permission to do that. And so that's what the MOUs are designed to do. That is what, in fact, it does. It provides the staff and I the authority to go and enforce what is controlled under the town's codified ordinances. But we don't charge you to address Mr. Spira's point. The boards over the years have had different concerns around cost and so in some cases, a board has wanted to cap the number of cases per year. So that's why there's, I think each one of those were probably adopted in different years and different successive boards. So we do get some of that in there, but as long as there's an MOU existing, we've always gone and supported the town staff in whatever, whatever the issue is that's, but it's an authority issue having to do, authority that town has.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, thank you. By the way, there are memorandums of understandings with other towns. And I do come from a jurisdiction where we had to, we had a city, which we were providing services to the city as that city was not of a significant size to provide its own. One of the One of the problems that we have is each one of these services have their different operative laws, and some of them require that you adopt an ordinance to effectuate it. So then the question is, is it a town ordinance or is it a county ordinance? Things that we did, like under the maintenance code, or for animal control, or for affordable housing, those are all subjects of MOUs. They're operated by different departments. They're operated under different state code provisions. They're operated by specific departments within the county or within the town. So having those separate MOUs makes some sense because that department is now going to have its own separate agreement. If you had one master agreement, I think it would get very cumbersome, pretty complicated to do that. Plus, each time you amended it to add a new service, you'd be amending the entire agreement rather than focusing on the particular service to be provided. Some services are going to be provided by the county by right within the town. Family services is being provided. You don't need a memorandum of understanding. Eligibility services would be provided. But others do require it. For instance, the county ordinances don't necessarily apply by right within the town because it is a separate political subdivision. Now, there are ways that we can work those out, and what I would say is that we should be doing that on a case-by-case basis, making the decisions as to how to do it. And whether or not it's in one agreement, which constantly has to be amended, or in separate agreements for each department and each service, I would go with the separate agreements because I think that makes more sense to separate each one out, make the decision on a case-by-case basis, have one department, say our building and development department say, we're going to be doing maintenance services within the town, or we're going to be inspecting pools from the health department. That would be an agreement that they would have, and they wouldn't have an agreement that included animal services or affordable housing or other things like that.
Ms. Fox?
Quick question. You just said county ordinances don't apply by right in the towns. Does that mean just for services or is that for everything?
It really depends on the state authorizing legislation. So for instance, the county noise ordinance doesn't apply within the bounds of the town, and we don't enforce it within the bounds of the town. Could it be done? Yes, we have to mirror our ordinances. There is a way that Chris and I could work and do that, but that's probably not a service that the town wants to have happen.
Okay. So I guess a good example just came down the pike, and this must be a state authorized legislation, but the plastic bag tax, because you have it in the county, we have it in the town. That's an example I was trying to get at. It's not a service, it's just something that came down and the county adopted, and it applies to the town. Is that true? Or do we have to adopt it, say, yes, we accept that?
No. The plastic bag tax was only to be adopted by towns, by cities and counties. So it's an authorities issue on that. So we have to look at the state authorizing legislation for why we're adopting whatever ordinance we have. And then, yes, that does apply within the confines of the town and throughout the entire boundaries of the county.
Okay. Thanks.
I would also, and Ms. Mayor Burke, I really appreciate what you just said because I often hear a town council member say, town residents pay county taxes too. But then you went on to say, and they get the same level of services. And I appreciated that second part because just to hear that part, people might not realize or think that, yes, you're completely right. I see every resident in the town of Leedsburg as my constituent, absolutely. And town residents pay county taxes, and they get all the same services that county residents do that don't live in the town, every service. And so I think that second part that you just said is really important to also be said because they are my constituents, they are Kristen's constituents, they are Mr. Kirsten's constituents as well. So having that explanation from Mr. Hymnstreet and Mr. Rogers, do we have any more questions about this item or any more statements? Or, Mr. Spira, would you like to say anything else?
I would.
Okay.
The thing that I would like to, and we don't have to resolve it tonight, but I would like to have a further discussion with the county attorney because I have some thoughts about this. I think there might be a simpler way to do it, rather than have an MOU that goes chapter and verse about what each department might do, an MOU that simply says, on this particular subject matter, the town is not exercising any jurisdiction, and we agree to the county doing whatever it does.
You've got to be giving up some of your own jurisdiction.
It seems to me that there might be a simpler way to do it, rather than having to do a, you know, a seven or eight-page memorandum that memorializes, you know, sort of chapter and verse on each individual department. There might just be a way to say, we, the town, accept what the county offers on this subject matter. We don't, for example, we don't have a building official. So if we had an MOU that simply said, on building inspection issues, property code, building maintenance enforcement, those types of things, we do not have staff to regulate that. We accept the county's jurisdiction.
So basically, you're saying it's not that you wouldn't have a memorandum, you streamlined the process?
A streamlined process that basically just says, here's what we're not regulating, we accept your regulation, instead of going into all this detail. And again, I'm not trying to resolve that tonight. I would just like everyone's concurrence that Leo and I could have that discussion.
I think that's, I think that's fine, Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that was my discussion, my suggestion is, it seems like there's an opportunity here for an omnibus memorandum, which basically is a summary memorandum, which lays out a table that says, on these issues, the following memorandum are on file and they cover these issues. In these issues, there's no memorandum, and we concur that the county has jurisdiction. And you have the cover memorandum, which basically says, this is where you go to get the answers to all these issues. I agree with you, rather than, it's kind of splitting the baby, but I think it makes a lot of sense.
Is anyone who has any objection with the two attorneys talking about this and figuring out how to do a memorandum that covers various issues at one time, omnibus memorandum, so to speak? Anybody have issues with that? Mayor Burke, you're fine with that? Okay. All right. Then the only thing we have left, Mayor Burke, is timetables for other meetings. I think this, I thought this was good. I really appreciate it, the fact that so many supervisors came because I do think town issues impact the whole county, so I really appreciated that. I'd like to do this at least once a year. Now, this gets kind of a little more political because the election schedules are so different, town to county. You all have staggered elections, the mayor's elected every two years, God save you for that, good God, no, thank you. Mayor's elected every two years. And so, you know, when we do this again next year, we may be looking at different people around the table. We will be looking at different people around the table. But I still think it's a good idea to do this every two, did you just wave by to me? Okay, then. So I think it's, but I do think every year, every year and PRN is how I would say it, like no less than once a year, but PRN. And so for instance, after people talk about revenue sharing, however that talks, those talks happen, if there is, you know, an opportunity, reason to bring it back to both bodies, then that'd be a PRN issue, right? As needed, I'm sorry, and as needed issue. Otherwise, we set one on the books every year, you know, like clockwork, and then do it as needed. That's, that would be my, what do you think, Mayor Burke?
Well, my first reaction was, I think this has been very productive, and I wondered if maybe doing it, my thought was once a quarter, but maybe twice a year, so that we have that connection and continue the discussion and conversation.
Yeah. I don't, I think that's, I was more trying to acquiesce to you all's other schedule. So you were just in here for the food. We did all this work, so you get some lasagna. Gotcha. We'll bring you some food, girl.
This is a holiday, though. We usually don't get fed until 10:30 at night.
Oh, stop it. I think once a quarter would be hard to do. I think twice a year could be figured out, so we would do it one more time before the end of this year.
And if we host, then we have to provide.
Yes, you do.
Yes, we do.
And I ain't talking about sandwiches either, I'm talking about food. But yes.
You can take a little time.
Exactly. Yeah, that fiscally conservative, that's fine. But no, I think, I think, I think, I think that, I think twice a year, and so, you know, count six months from now and figure out what works on our schedules in about six months is absolutely fine if no one has objection to that every six months. Mr. Sains?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry for being a little late. I got to hang up at work today. But listened to the conversation from, I was driving from the city down here earlier. So one thing that was on the agenda, I don't know if it was brought up or not, so again, forgive me if you guys already covered it, but the plastic bag tax, did we cover that or answer?
We didn't, but since that was your initiative, if you want to say something about it, feel free.
Well, I just wanted to, you know, answer any questions that might be on the table. You know, I know we've received a letter, you guys have talked about it a few times, but I just want to make sure it's clear that we're just following everything that was laid out in the legislation from the General Assembly where they're giving the authority to the counties and the cities to, you know, put that tax on folks who are using the plastic bags when they're going to their grocery stores. And the thinking is for this tax hopefully not to be around for a long time and not to see a lot of revenue from it because we want to try to encourage folks to either use reusable bags or just carry in your sweatshirt or your hand, you know, your one or two items, and not use the plastic bags that if you do the stream cleanings and you look at our street sweeping and neighborhood cleanups, you're going to find tires, you're going to find plastic bags, you're going to find motorcar engines, I don't know how they get in the streams, but they're in there all the time, so.
And more plastic bags.
And more plastic bags, you're absolutely correct. And I know there's been some questions about how can the town get some of the revenue. Well, the county's going to receive the revenue, and then we're going to partner with everybody in regards to, at least I'm visioning, and I don't know if we have the correct staff here to answer the questions, but envision doing stream cleanups and promoting that with the local jurisdictions and doing different programs. Some of the revenue will be going to folks who are on the WIC program and SNAP program. So yes, your town residents will be receiving the revenue from this tax. Again, hopefully, we pray it's going to be not much revenue because people are going to change their behavior. So I just wanted to, you know, throw that out there and answer any questions that there might, might have been from it.
Mr. Martinez?
I suggest we use some of that revenue for more goats.
For more goats? Oh, yeah. Remember that from a couple of years. Yeah?
They're coming back.
I don't know, we have to check with the staff to see if that's possible, but we can check and see.
Yeah, we've, no, we're not.
We're talking about the environment. That is a great way to stop using chemicals in some of our streams and other water areas.
Yep.
No, no, it's fine. In fact, I was going to say, I watched a two-hour documentary on plastics and climate change and read an article the other day that they have now detected microplastic in human blood for the first time ever. It's a serious, serious problem. Touching anything plastic right now. And I was very pleased to see the plastic bag tax. I got a nasty email like a week later from a lady who said, how dare you tax me for plastic bags? I will never pay a plastic bag tax. I'll show you, I'm going to go get some of my own bags and take my own bags to the grocery store.
Well, there you go.
Well, there you go.
I remember that email. I just, I remember that email. Ms. Fox?
Thank you. I see it a little bit differently. Of course, I would. But I see an extra tax on some of the folks here as just that an extra tax. We're at a point where we are, we're discovering a hidden tax with our inflation. I get, I get what you're trying to do about changing the behavior, but as far as the environment's concerned, with the provision, you know, having, the stores having to provide the paper bags, you're cutting down a lot of trees. There's something with the environment, too, but that's not the thing I'm worried about. I'm worried about people, the extra cost going to, you know, having to provide those bags as well as plastic bags. I get it that they'll have a choice and everything, but the extra cost is actually going to fall on the consumer, and the consumer will go elsewhere. And I just don't see that as a great thing. So I have a little bit of a different perspective on the plastic bag tax, and I just wanted to put it out there. Thanks.
I appreciate that. I'm not sure how, I mean, this consumer would have to go pretty far to go elsewhere because every place in Northern Virginia has actually passed them. In fact, I think we were, okay, then they may have to go there because we were, if you want to go out of West Virginia for the purpose of not paying five cents, 15 cents in a plastic, you're going to spend more money on your gas. But okay, but yeah, okay, I got, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, okay. Anything else on this issue?
I was just going to wrap up and say that, you know, we have Wegmans, to Chair Randle's point, that yeah, with Northern Virginia, pretty much every jurisdiction now is doing this. Wegmans has put out a blanket nationwide, they're getting rid of plastic bags, they're moving towards paper because it's not just in Virginia, it's happening all around the country.
Or canvas, or the canvas.
Or the canvas bags, exactly. And then think about it also, for decades now, if you shop at, I don't have a Sam's Club membership, but if you go to Costco, we haven't been using bags forever at Costco, right? So this is something easy that people can do, and I understand your point, Councilwoman Fox, but I think to me this is an easily volunteer tax that we all just need to move away from. Because, case in point, I was at the store the other day buying some razors for my head or for my shaving, and they go, oh, you want to pass it back? And I was like, I'm just buying a pack of razors, I don't need a, I don't need a plastic bag for that. So if we all just do our part, this will be something that can go away, and we won't even think about this, I think, in six months to a year, I guarantee you.
Yeah, it's a regressive tax, hopefully. Anyway, I will hand it to Mayor Burke to make wrap-up statements before I make any last statements.
Well, I just want to thank the staffs that were here tonight and the board members that came. I think this was very useful for us. It opened our, I think it opened everybody's eyes a little bit, and so I think it was very worthwhile, our time. I do thank you for the food, even though I didn't eat any. But, okay. And so I just want to thank you for being willing to do this and taking the time to organize it and get us all together. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. And, I mean, of all the things we do, this is one of the easiest and most pleasant. I think that, you know, again, were it not for COVID, we probably would have done this before. And as I said before, I don't, you know, I'm surprised when people see like a lesser body or a higher, you know, people run for the jobs they want, and I've never, never thought of it like that, to be quite honest. Not even like for bodies that are higher than this body, like Congress is like, is Congress really a higher body? I'm like, don't know about that. Don't know about that. So I appreciate you all coming over. I think this was a great meeting, and I look forward to doing it again in six months. I will, I will give all of you all my personal cell phone number. If you want to call me at any time, please do, because as I said when I started, I don't really say things about people that I don't say to you, right? I just, just don't. And so I'm happy to have any of those conversations at any time, answer any questions, and just, you know, keep those lines of communications open, because that's the way it really, it's just the way it should happen. I will say that on March 25th, I'm sorry, May 25th, I'll be having my seventh State of the County address. You are all invited to the State of the County address. I hope, some of you actually have RSVP'd already. I'd love to see you there, love to have you. And lastly, and maybe most importantly, I want to thank the staff because if anyone understands local government, they will know that the heavy lifting is done at the staff level. So thank you to the staff. And with that, we are adjourned.